Good evening and welcome. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board for Monday, July 15, 2024. We have with us this evening members Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, Roy Gardner, Miles Heager, myself, Kevin Riley. We have a number of items on the agenda. We have one of which is going to be continued, so we will first move to the approval of minutes. Item number two on the agenda. We have minutes available for May 20 and June 3, assuming that there are no questions or comments from members. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes without formal reading in the form presented tonight.
Moved.
Motion by Mr. Heager. Is there a second to that motion, Mr. Gardner? Is there further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So that is a unanimous vote of all members present. With respect to our public hearing at 7:15, well, it's only 7:05, so we'll wait for a couple of minutes on that, I guess. You want to just discuss master plan for a minute?
Sure.
Kind of out of order. So we do have an item on the agenda tonight with regard to the master plan recommendation. We are looking to formalize a recommendation as to adoption or not of the master plan from the planning board. The master plan, the final version of the master plan, I believe, was posted online this past week, so it is in its final form, available on the town website, and it will be up to the board to, as I say, make that recommendation as to adoption regarding that plan. So we can do one of two things this evening. We can entertain a motion relative to its acceptance, or to recommended acceptance, or I think the other thing might be to perhaps push this onto our next agenda for a final vote, given that the final version was only posted, you know, in the past few days, online. So comments or questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board on that?
I think it would make sense to postpone the final vote on it until people have had a chance to read it.
I mean, I think, obviously, we've got several members who are not here tonight, so, you know, I think it would allow them to weigh in if they had comments or questions as well.
Right, right.
So...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we table voting on the master plan until our next meeting, when we have more membership here.
So that would be a motion to continue to, where are we, August 19? So Mr. Heager makes the motion to continue action with respect to recommendation on the master plan until 7:15 on August 19. There's a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. Discussion.
I'm just wondering that the members from OCPC are here.
I think I didn't, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you guys were here. Oh, by all, I didn't think you were coming, so by all means, then, before we do that, come up and...
It might be a challenge for them to come again. I don't know.
Sure, okay, then, by all means, come on up, and I humbly apologize.
This was supposed to be joint with the Select Board, though. Should we wait or no? That's why we chose this date.
Okay.
I mean, I can come up and chat, and then I can have Charlie then afterwards, I guess.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So I do want to know, I know there's just a comment made, but there's only been a week since the final copy was made, but there was a three-week public comment period that did happen before that, and it was available to the boards two weeks prior to that as well. But I can talk a little bit, because there were questions, and I would actually like to answer them about what the master plan was. And then...
Just for our record, if you'd give us...
Yeah.
Name and...
So, for everybody here tonight, my name's Rhiannon Dugan, and I was the project manager on behalf of Old Colony Planning Council, the regional planning agency. You already have your copy, Dan. And we helped put together the master plan for the town. This was not done overnight. This was a 10-month undertaking of multiple staff's full-time work on our end and working really closely with Charlie Seelig and other boards and departments that we've met with. So I'll just give a brief overview of what the master plan is and why it's on the agenda for tonight. So the master plan is a comprehensive plan for the town. It's supposed to be done every 10 years. East Bridgewater's last one was done in the 80s. They haven't had one since. So using state funding through district local technical assistance, East Bridgewater put together funding to write this master plan. It was started in about September. We just wrapped it up. This included having three public meetings that we held. We held the first one in Town Hall in this room. We had a second one at, we have the second one here, too. We have the second one here, too, now that I'm standing in the room remembering the maps. And the third one was done at East Bridgewater's Public Library. We had a session, that last session, we went over all the final recommendations. But overall, this whole plan is just designed to go through various lists of topics. It starts, sorry, it starts with an introduction and overall layout of land use for the town, how zoning it currently is, if there were any suggestions. It talks about open space and recreation, conservation, housing, transportation, economic development, public services and facilities. So it's a really big depth of information. The document is really big. It's over 120 pages without an appendix. The appendix is twice the size, because it's where all the research is compiled. And we put together a list of recommendations that went out for public review. It went to the boards, it went to the actual public. It was submitted, it was posted on the town site, it was posted at a final meeting, and it's been on Old Colony Planning Council's website as well. But this didn't come together quickly. We've done a lot of things. In addition to the three public meetings, we had an amazing survey that got 757 responses from people who live or own a property in town, which was fantastic turnout. We took a ton of recommendations from that. If you get a chance to look at the master plan after tonight, and the introduction to every chapter, we have a cover page that explains to you what that chapter talks about, relevant data that we found statistically, and then also what the community survey results said, and that's information that we use to help shape the plan. And it's not a mandate list, it's just this is all of the data that we went through, this is all the community feedback we received, this is the direction steps the town may wish to take over the next 10 years. What I handed out to the planning board is what I call the cheat sheet, but it's the action plan, so it lists all the goals for each chapter that we came up with, things the town might want to strive for, ideally, who's responsible for them based on town organization, and different funding resources. And we were hoping to do a joint meeting tonight with the planning board and the Select Board, just because the Select Board schedule has been as busy as the planning board, so we know how hard it is to get in here and talk to folks. But we wanted to take time to officially present it, but the planning board for master plans does have the final say in approval or denial, so it could be approved with amendments, approved or rejected, which is what we were going to talk about tonight. It sounds like we might not be, but we'll stay tuned to hear more about that. Does anybody in the, well, planning board first, I guess, but does anybody have questions about anything in the plan itself or respect to the process?
So, Rachel, go ahead, yeah?
I don't have a question in particular. I read the plan the past couple of days, and it was very dense, but I do like the way it balanced the different needs of the town, both the land use protection, because it's, you know, we have a lot of semi-rural areas and the water and all that, plus the housing, plus the commercial development. So I thought it was a reasonably, you know, good balance between all those factors, so I do compliment you on that, that hard work, so.
Does anybody have any comments about the process?
From all your feedback, did you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Rich Veroli from Summit Drive. From all the feedback that you've got, was there one particular thing that the people would like to see more than anything else in town?
There was a lot of talk about how to make sure that the farmland that really builds out the character in town stays in some way or form. So in a few public meetings, one of the biggest discussions we had was how the town, including Conservation Commission, which is actually already getting started on this, can make a strong inventory of lands that are currently in temporary conservation restriction, and how to make the town best suitable to take those on permanently, should they fall out of ownership. Another large conversation we had is that East Bridgewater didn't have access to a grocery store, and what were some of the combats around that, whether it was, is there a way to reach out to local transportation, that way people don't have to rely on their own vehicle if they're not able to drive to get groceries? How can we expand farmers' markets in town so there's at least fresh produce in the summer? And then would Jared's encounter best suited to hold a grocery store in the future?
Is there any input about the youth in the town, something for the youth?
Yeah, we had, in a couple of different formats of conversations, but we worked closely with the library in town, specifically with the director, and the youth in town heavily use the library, and they don't have enough resources to really give them proper engagement. Like, they almost need like an after-school program that isn't being provided, and it'd be great to see that at the library. There was a big push for that. And then also for younger children, the town doesn't have a, like, pre-age-appropriate playground that's not already owned by a public school, so you can't use it during public school hours. So how can we redo the park that exists in town that isn't suitable for all ages and it's not in the perfect condition at the moment? And if there were any other areas that the planning board over time could find that could also go to youth recreation? There's also information on expanding the recreation website of the town to get better information out to youth and families.
Mr. Litchfield, 788 Bridge Street. You mentioned supermarkets, and you're aware that Whitman's closing, Stoppy Shops?
Yes.
Halifax is closing, Pembroke is closing?
Yeah.
Now, also, part of this flow of the study, are you also implicated in Chapter 90 in the general Commonwealth of Massachusetts for road development and planning on traffic flow within the Commonwealth, within the city, the town?
There is a, I'm not a transportation expert, I did have transportation...
Well, my question is that, I spoke to your boss, Mary Walden, about this.
Mm-hmm.
And I've known Mary for over 25 years. They spent the plans on the corner of Bridge and Plymouth Street for over 10 to 15 years to do something with the intersection there. I'm just a layman. This past year, my house got hit. I went to Mary Walden, she said nothing could be done. I went to the East Bridgewater Police Department. I got a call from the East Bridgewater Police Department to tell me to come in and go get the accident reports. I came in, they knew nothing about it. 20 minutes later, a sergeant came out and he said, "Here's your report." Also, there was a plan, Old Colony Planning Review in there. How long these reviews have been going on? I've lived in this area for over 21 years. I grew up on Robert's Road. You've got to do something with the traffic flow. You've also had to develop the traffic flow within the center. Who's going to get killed there next?
We do...
How long is that study going to take before we start burying people, going through that intersection, being killed? We've had enough studies. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts lost $3.9 billion last year to people moving on the Commonwealth. When the governor took over, you had $3 billion surplus. That tells me right now, you're looking at a $7 billion surplus deficit you've got to make up. Who's going to pay for this work being done? And how much can we, as taxpayers and people in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, continue to take before we move out of this area?
Yeah, those are...
I grew up on Robert's Road. I'm familiar with the accidents.
Okay. A lot of questions thrown in there, so let's, if, Rhiannon, you have any responses to that, we can...
Yeah, I can address a few of it. I can't address all of it, because I can't speak for the mayor. I don't work for the state directly. Where regional planning agencies are quasi-state, but we don't control what the state dictates, and we don't control their funding. One thing that a regional planning agency does, as you know, which is why you spoke to Mary Walden, is we have an MPO which works on transportation projects throughout the region, and the best thing that we can do is we give suggestions up to the state through the Transportation Improvement Plan. Unfortunately, road construction costs so much money, and the state only gives a certain percentage per area over time, so they build out project lists for over 10 years. I mean, anybody who's seen a road go through construction knows it takes a really long time, right? Like, they don't get it done in a weekend, we all know that. We've all hit every pothole in Massachusetts. I can attest to that. So, but the tip takes about it being written out already for 10 years from now, it's in two, three-year increments. East Bridgewater does have representatives on the MPO, and the best thing that they can do is continue working with them, so that way it's a priority. We do have, we know how bad, I know how bad the intersections are, because I've read the data, I've read the fatality counts. We have maps on how bad some of the intersections are in town, and we've written recommendations, and we've written about how different state programs work. Unfortunately, it's not in my control, and I certainly work under Mary Walden, so if
Who do I speak to?
Mary Walden says it's not working, it's not something I can do.
Who do I speak to?
Um...
Mary's your boss, she's the director.
Well, she is the director.
And she can't tell me who to speak to?
I can...
Do I speak to Mike Brady, Cassidy? Who do I speak to?
You can speak to Mike Brady.
Do I call Congressman Lindsey Washington?
You can speak to any representative you want.
I can, Dan, which I know quite well. Something's got to be done.
I completely agree.
Point taken, okay. Other questions from the audience? Diane, comments?
I want to thank the board for nominating me to be on that committee. It was really, it was interesting to get the feedback from all the people from the town, putting all the data together. I was really impressed with how the report came about, and I want to thank you for allowing me to be that representative on the committee. It was great.
Miles?
I'm just, I'm still working through the end of it, so that's why I think, especially with a couple of members missing tonight, tabling it till next month would probably be a good idea.
Speaking for myself, I've gone through, I went through the whole initial draft. I think I've been through probably 75, 80% of the final one, and, you know, I joined with the other members in just commending you on the final product. It really is a good synopsis of things. It certainly taught me a lot that I was not aware of about the town of East Bridgewater, and I think it's a good guidepost, you know, for this board and for others to, you know, to work with going forward. So I think the only reason that I would hesitate tonight, as Mr. Heager is saying, is that we don't have two members here. I know one is a brand-new member, Mr. Crosby, so I just want to have those folks have an opportunity to do the comment and whatever, so. And Roy, any? No?
I just, I've had a chance to scan it and kind of do a preview of it. I think it looks very good, it seems to cover all the bases. I need time to go through it in more detail, there is a lot of pages, and there's a lot of data in this, so.
Absolutely, okay. So I'm sure office Charlie is, is coming out of Select Board meeting?
And fill him in, and then...
So your desire would be to have a joint meeting with Selectmen, Select Board, the next...
The Select Board doesn't, we, it's our, like, courtesy that we like to present it to the Select Board, because they are in charge of most of the funding and budgeting for the town, so we were trying to do a joint meeting, because you guys meet on the same night sometimes, so we were hoping to do, like, one solid presentation, but that doesn't work out sometimes, too, and that's fine. It's not a mandate, we just do have to get in front of the Select Board.
All right, so we'll see, I mean, we'll try to coordinate that, to see if we can't do something at that August 19 meeting, assuming the Selectmen are meeting on that evening, and otherwise, I would assume that we would wrap up our portion of it that evening. So the motion on the table is to continue this matter until, yes, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Tom, I have a question on the street. I went to a few of those meetings, and we discussed perhaps getting a grocery store in town?
Yes.
Is that, I haven't read the finished product yet.
So there's...
Like a Trader Joe, something that other towns don't have, and we give jobs to some of the youth in the town as well?
There were a few recommendations for that, and we talked about possibly starting off like a seasonal farmer's market, just because it takes so much time to get a grocery store in, was one of our first recommendations, and then we did talk about the other, we did all the sub-alternatives, and then obviously, like, the overarching, we need a grocery store, but it does take time. There's also limited sewer access in town, which is currently being expanded, that can be super helpful for encouraging a grocery store to move in, so all the information is captured in there. For sure. It's mostly in the economic development chapter, if you go online to read it tonight, and you're just looking for that information.
And the motion on the table is 7:15, August 19. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Unanimously voted. Thank you, Rhiannon, appreciate it. With respect to our public hearing on Laurel Street, we have received a request from the applicant to continue that matter until September 16 at 7:15 p.m. Basis for that is that our peer review has not yet been completed and returned to the board, so the motion would be to, at the applicant's request and with their appropriate consent, to continue the public hearing on 140 Laurel Street to September 16 at 7:15 p.m. So Mr. Heager makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gardner. All in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Unanimous vote of those, all those members present and voting. Thank you.
7:15.
All right, we're a little bit, running a little bit ahead, but these are not public hearings, so we're in good shape as far as our discussion with respect to the MBTA overlay districts. Mr. Gardner, I turn it over to you for, I think you've got your screen set up, so we can...
Yeah.
Go through that.
Okay, some, some quick overview here of what we're, what we're working on right now. The MBTA zoning district was based on an act passed, sorry, passed by the legislature in Section 3A of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, which is the zoning act. That requires the planning board to put together a plan for zoning an area with overlay districts to allow for up to 15 units per acre of residential housing. The way the law is written and the administrative documents that go with it, it's not an option for the town, it's a mandate to the town. So the planning board, under the law, has to propose at least one zoning district, and we may propose two zoning districts, that meet that criteria of 15 residential units per acre. The first district that we're going to be working on, or looking at tonight, is the proposed MBTA zoning district north, which is that piece of property bounded by the Whitman Town Line, Route 18 on the east, effectively Winter Street on the west, and some additional property lines, as noted on the map that's up on the screen, on the south side. My general information will note, this has no direct relationship to the 40B proposal that's currently before the Zoning Board of Appeals. This includes that same area. The planning board, as part of this, is going to propose a roadway layout that would look something like what's up on the screen, where there's entrances off of Route 18, entrances off of Winter Street, with an internal roadway layout. That would allow the public safety, fire department, police department, so on and so forth, as well as traffic, to have a reasonable pattern, and for the vehicles to be able to enter and leave in the direction in which they want to go. This map in the green area shows the actual DEP wetlands that have been marked. Those are on the GIS map, those are also on the GIS map that's available online in the assessor's office. That GIS map is the new GIS map, which was just introduced last year. It allows you to go down to a very low level of granularity, as little as three or four square feet. That's where all of these documents come from. The next document we'll just look at... Why is it showing everything with a gray background, Tim? All right, this is a, it's a pretty steep document, it's 14 pages, it's the actual text that goes with the zoning bylaw. For all intents and purposes, for the town, it does very little, although it's required under the state law to have this. We do have a table, which actually tells us virtually all of how this would work. We'll take a quick look at that table. This is the table that shows what the zoning would allow as of right. It would allow residential units, starting at one unit and 10,000 square feet, all the way up to 12 units, which incrementally increase over the number of units, all the way up to 34,000 square feet. The math behind this is that the, this maximum number of 12 units, a 12-unit building on 34,800 square feet, I believe that is, would meet our requirement of allowing up to 15 units per acre.
Section 16, okay.
We've done a lot of background information, a good part of which was also in the, in part in the master plan. This is a history of the residential housing units in the town of East Bridgewater. The majority of this information comes from the U.S. Census. The key dates, we were looking at this to try and compare this with other impacts in the town, such as water, school, so on and so forth, are the numbers that start at the year 2000. We had 4,888 housing units in the town. Then each of the 10-year increments, in the 10-year increments from 2010 to 2019, we added 256 housing units. Population, I'm sorry, the running total of housing units went to 5,144. 2020 or later, we had 28, that number is actually closer to 98 now, with a number of 5172. Total housing units right now is approximately 5,300. This is a table that comes directly from the Board of Education. These are audited numbers done on an annual basis. From 1990 to 1999, with a total of 4,217 housing units, the town had 2,468 students, a ratio of .59 students per housing unit. 2000 to 2009, when the housing unit count went up to 4,888, the number of students went down to 2,314, which was a ratio of .47 students per housing unit. From 2010 to 2019, with 256 housing units added, for a total of 5,144 housing units, the number of students was 2,216, with a ratio of .43 students per housing unit. the number of students was 2,216, with a ratio of .43 students per housing unit. Between 2020 and 2021, there's an additional 28 units, so we have 5,172, the same number from that previous slide, with 2,063 students, a ratio of 0.40 students per housing unit. With the additional number of building permits, the expectation was at the end of last year, which would be the fiscal year, was just closed, we'd have somewhere around 5,211. We believe it's closer to 5,300 today, with a total number of 2,008 students, with a ratio of students to housing units in town is .39. The U.S. Census has also shown us that back in 1960, the number of residents within a housing unit in the town of East Bridgewater was 4.2. As of today, the number of residents within a housing unit in the town of East Bridgewater is 3.1. So, the school system today actually has more rooms available than it had in the year 2000, when we, 1999, when we had almost 2,500 students. We have 500 students less than that today. That's the actual audited table directly from the state website. It covers preschool, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, all the way up to 12th grade. Those are the actual numbers, every grade audited by the state annually, all the way back to 2002. Those are the actual numbers. You saw those numbers summarized on the previous slide. Enrollment in East Bridgewater is going down at a ratio of approximately 4% to 5% per year, even though the housing units is going up at a ratio of close to 100 units per year. The average number of residents within a home in the state of Massachusetts has gone from 4.8 to 3.2 in the last two decades. And as we showed before, East Bridgewater's own population, even though the housing units have gone up, the population has gone down for the last two years, and continues to trend down according to the census. Some additional pieces of information. Question has been asked multiple times in both this forum and in the forum for the 40B about wetlands. Wetlands are not exempt from this or from the 40B. They still must meet all of the state and local requirements for wetlands if they need to cross those wetlands, and they cannot fill wetlands. Second item that has come up multiple times is the situation with water in town. There's been a lot of misinformation about water bans, both in town and in neighboring Bridgewater. Fact is, we're a well-watered town. Second fact is, the state requires that during summer high drought times, we alternate days for water. We are not short of water in the town of East Bridgewater. In addition to that, we have a working intermunicipal agreement with the town of Brockton, with a large water line on Thatcher Street, which directly connects into the East Bridgewater system. In case of emergency or potentially long-term additional water need, there is more than enough water available, since the city of Brockton has many millions of gallons in excess, since they're required by the state to run their desalination plant for at least 20 years, and they're only using approximately 10% of that water. In question to the onsite septic systems, the intent would be that all residential housing built in this area would be built using municipal water treatment systems. We already have an intermunicipal agreement that was worked on for almost a decade with the city of Brockton, which was signed three years ago. We have an excess of 100,000 gallons a day currently committed with that IMA. That project is now, I believe, 90% funded, and as it currently stands, ground will break in the fall to run that line down Thatcher Street, Summer Street, Winter Street, onto this property. And eventually, that line will run all the way down to formerly Compass Medical Center, which I now believe is Signature Health, and include all of this area. Additionally, the state is working on reconstructing the intersection at Highland Street and Route 18, and was out there earlier this year, taking measurements all the way from the Whitman Town Line down to the end of the, well, let's call it the Compass, I was going to say the end of what used to be the Fox Pro Company property, which is now the Signature Healthcare property. There is a plan to redo, although I haven't seen the plan and it's not in its final form, to redo the intersection of Highland Street and Route 18, which includes widening and realigning the intersection. All of that directly impacts this. Winter Street, when the sewer line goes in, will be reconstructed to raise the elevation and handle whatever culverts need to be upgraded underneath Winter Street. So, at least theoretically, based on the plans that have been done, there will no longer be flooding across the road on Winter Street. All of this information will be posted on the town website, probably as early as Wednesday or Thursday, once we finish putting it together into a more logical order. So, I'd ask, if any members of the board have any questions, feel free.
Ladies?
From where we started to this point, this is very comprehensive, and I really appreciate all that information and all the work you've done, Mr. Gardner.
Rachel.
No, I don't have any questions at this point. I think it's, what you said is pretty, pretty clear.
Echo Rachel's statements. I don't have questions at the moment, but all these numbers that have been presented certainly are good to be able to look over and dive into a little bit more in depth. So, thank you for your time on that.
And just for clarification, again, what is being proposed is, in this area, is an overlay district, meaning that the underlying zoning district would not change. This would simply overlay it to give a developer who was so inclined, an opportunity to construct according to the allowances and provisions of the MBTA community's bylaw, as it would be adopted. Again, the function of this board with respect to the MBTA zoning is simply to come up with a final proposal. That proposal, as we explained last time, will end up going to the town meeting. The town meeting will be the final decider as to whether that proposal is or is not accepted by the town. Roy, anything further that you wanted to? Oh, yeah, that, actually, that.
Now, there's two pieces I wanted to make everyone aware of. These are actually the last two sections in the document. The first one is Section J, which is severability. It simply says that if, if any court of competent jurisdiction invalidates any part of this bylaw, the remaining part shall not be affected and shall remain in full force. The invalidity of any provision of this Section 16 shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the town of East Bridgewater zoning.
More importantly, however.
The next sentence is also important. As some of you are aware, or maybe all of you are aware, the MBTA zoning district is currently before the State Supreme Court. The State Supreme Court has agreed to hear the case sometime this fall and make a decision, although they won't commit ahead of time as to when that decision would be made. So, we also added a paragraph that says if the MB community zoning bylaw is found to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, we already know that the State Supreme Court has taken that directly out of the hands of the district court, all the way up to themselves, which is extremely rare in land use matters. So, obviously, they have something to say about it. If it's found invalid, Section 16 shall entirely be deleted from the East Bridgewater zoning bylaw and shall not affect the validity or remainder of the town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaw. So, that says if the State Supreme Court says that Section 3A of Chapter 48 is invalid, then this goes away. The second piece of this is a sunset provision. Now, the way the documents that go along with 3A are written, the town is considered an adjacent MBTA community. That says we're next door to at least one station. In fact, we're next door to five stations, each one of which is, give or take, less than half mile away from the borderline, the borders of the town of East Bridgewater. That says, under the guidelines that the state has set forth, that we're what's called a 10% community. That means that we need to have enough space to build up to 10% of our housing units in these MBTA zoning districts. That says we need enough space for roughly 5,100 to 50, I'm sorry, we have roughly 5,100 to 5,300, which we're still trying to finalize downstairs, but that means we need 510, 520 of these housing units within the district. So, this section says that once we've reached the number of 110% of the required minimum number of units that are either constructed or have building permits issued, then this overlay district shall be suspended until such time as Massachusetts General Laws modifies the implementation rules. So, once we hit our number, which again, right now, was somewhere around 520, this section would be suspended until such time as the state deems it appropriate to change the state law.
If they do.
Now, that would, that would assume, number one, they wanted to do that, and would also assume, number two, that the Supreme Judicial Court has found this law to be legal. I think that's all I got today. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, the chairman just noted that I kind of skipped over the downtown district. So, let's take a look at that. Okay, now, this is currently what we're proposing as the downtown district. Everyone's benefit. That big building at the top is the United States Post Office. Right now, we're still discussing among the planning board members, as well as our track committee, whether the line should go along the center line of Spring Street, or whether it should include this piece of land here on the opposite side of Spring Street. Now, one of the reasons that we're looking at this is a bunch of the land on this side, and this side is owned by the same individual. So, to some extent, it would make sense to include that land. Now, on the, in this area here, this big triangle, that's the
Eastern states?
Eastern State Steel Site, which as I think everyone in town knows at the current time is deemed a federal superfund site, which before could be used by a private party, would have to be fully cleaned, up to federal standards. One of the ideas of including this in that area is that, that both the state and federal government have indicated there could be a significant amount of grants granted to the town if we propose some reasonable use for that site. Currently, both the federal government and the state government indicated that the most reasonable uses in today's housing shortage is residential housing. Now, one of the reasons we're considering taking this bottom piece out and drawing the line on the center line of Spring Street is because this overlays the wetlands in it. And this, this parcel, which looks vacant, has a significant wetland impact diagonally through the middle of it, which would make it fairly difficult to use for multifamily housing. This parcel, which also looks vacant, also is heavily dominated by wetlands. This occupied parcel is more than half wetlands, which only leaves three to four other parcels, which would mean we'd be, would be creating a small, little pocket down here, which from a planning standpoint, probably isn't good planning. So, the expectation is, when we propose this in the final draft, this line will be the line that we actually use. And just for, for a little better understanding, the initial map that we saw of the area up near the Whitman Town Line includes a total of 116.151 acres. Those are the numbers off the GIS maps in the assessor's office. Now, obviously, at 15 units per acre, that's way more than 520 units. Part of the problem we have with that parcel, as we saw in the map, is it's approximately 35% to 40% wetlands, which would mean that land they couldn't touch, which would drop that acreage to somewhere around 65 to 70. The other intent is the, the table that we've drafted allows single-family homes on smaller lots, which, which in the opinion of the planning board, although not formally voted yet, in the opinion of our track group, would be more in keeping with the town of East Bridgewater and the current housing stock. There's at least three different areas in town where we have houses on lots as small as 5,000 square feet. So, this would allow lots on, this would allow houses on lots of 10,000 square feet, but in addition, they wouldn't need Title V septic systems. They'd be on municipal sewerage.
What's that?
Oh, I think that's it.
Okay. So, thank you for that update, Mr. Gardner. I think we're at a point where we would pull together a final version of both the mapping and the bylaw, the proposed bylaw, and that's what we would ultimately be looking to, to vote on one way or another. We can take, if you guys have questions, we can certainly take some questions at this point tonight, based on what you've heard, and happy to entertain those. Again, if you will identify yourself, sir, in the back, you had your hand up first, if you'll identify yourself, again, and have at it.
Rich Ferrioli, 24 Summit Drive. If the Supreme Court rules against the MBTA legislation you said this all goes away?
Yep, that's correct.
Does the 40B go away?
No. Entirely different apples and oranges.
So, what goes away?
MBTA zoning requirements.
Okay. It's my understanding, according to Mr. Gardner, what she answered me on Facebook, that the 40B, there would be no vote on the 40B up in Whitman, and, I mean, in the
In the North District.
The North District, yes. There's no, there's not going to be any town vote on that, is that correct?
It would be a matter that would be handled by the zoning board of appeals. They would be the ones who would make that vote.
But we're not going to get a chance to vote on that.
You would have input, but the town, a town meeting or anything like that, no.
Okay, so, if that goes through, right, the 40B goes through as planned, that's going to bring us up from 3.9 to approximately 7.9, correct?
0.8, I think it was, something like that.
I thought it was in the 7s.
Oh, it was 6.8, but whatever, something.
That shows the state that we're trying to meet the 10%, correct?
That shows the state that we're trying to meet the 10%, correct? We're trying to meet that 10% that they want us to meet. So does that take the pressure off the other across from the post office for us to do something with that right away? Showing the state that we're trying to comply, because I looked at the...I looked online and there aren't many towns that are at 10% right now. What is the deadline right now that we have to be at 10%?
31...oh, no, sorry. The deadline to comply with the requirements of Section 3A, the MBTA Community Zoning Act, is December 31 of this year.
Okay. So to answer my question, if we get to a point where we're going to put the 40B in there, it's going to raise us up to approximately whatever they...you said it was going to be 6.8, 7 or so, does that mean that we still have to comply by 2023 at 10%? We still have to get up to 10%? Or are we going to be penalized in some way?
I'm not sure what you mean by penalized.
Well, are we going to lose Chapter 9 funding? Are we going to lose a gas tax? Are we going to lose school aid?
To the extent that there is not compliance...
Right.
...with 3A.
Right.
Theoretically, well, I suppose we don't know what the consequences of that are, right?
I can't find anything online that says what is going to be the penalty if we don't comply.
Right, that's...I mean, they've...you know, you've seen that they've threatened Milton with different sanctions and so forth. I don't think any of those, Roy, do you know that? I don't know that any of them have been actually formally steps have been taken.
Well, it's in court right now, so that...all of that stuff is in advance, but they've indicated four different grant programs that give money to the cities and towns would be suspended to those cities and towns that don't comply with Section 3A. That's in writing. Grants are suspended. Came from the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, exactly.
And the final question is...
I'm the housing guy at OCPC. As you can imagine, I'm not well-liked in a lot of spaces, but there's a few different things. So MBTA communities of 3A and 40B are different laws. They're under sort of 40A, which is the state housing zoning code, but very different. So the 10% that you're referencing for 40B, that is sort of a moving target because it's based off of population, and population changes, and so those numbers have been flowing. So unless you're at 10%, it's going to be...it's a moving target to ever reach that 10%. So that's the first thing. The second thing is 40B is somewhat of a requirement for housing affordability. MBTA communities has nothing to do with affordability. So you could build, in essence, luxury housing as part of MBTA communities, and that's what you build. Some towns are trying to figure out how to diversify housing types to meet affordability for working folks, young families, seniors who want to downsize, whatever. So that's sort of where that is. And so 40B equals affordability in some sense. MBTA communities, other than providing multifamily housing, doesn't care about affordability as much. It's up to the town to figure out what they want to do for affordability within their specific districts. In regards to penalties, it's hard to say because the court hasn't ruled either way. I do know that Milton did receive a grant from the state. They came out of compliance with MBTA communities, and the state pulled that grant away. And so there is precedent there for the state to say, if you're not complying with this, we'll either take back money that we've earmarked for your town, i.e. Milton, or restrict and pull back funding for, you know, the things that you mentioned, housing authorities, schools, those types of things.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. That was a great synopsis. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I have one final question. So this site right here that we're talking about, not the site, the one across from the post office, how is that going to benefit the East Bridgewater citizens and especially the abutters? What benefit will we get from this site being developed, especially the abutters?
Well, I would say a couple of things. Number one is you have a more aesthetically pleasing site. Two is you have a clean site. Three is you have a property that is becoming much more tax productive for the town and allows for an expansion of your tax base. So, I mean, I think those, you know, those things are certainly parts of it. Whether, you know, Roy, if you've got any other thoughts, I mean, those are, I think, the biggest pieces.
Well, another piece to that is this area will be considered and probably would go to what is called mixed use, where commercial uses are allowed on the first floor. So we could have office space, office buildings, small business, almost anything on the first floor, like a bunch of the other communities are doing right now.
Okay, thank you. This is Luchfield, 788 Bridge Street. To get back to the peaceful metal project, Whitman, East Bridgewater line, originally there was going to be 240 units built there. Now, two years ago at the town meeting, we were told that there would be funded to encompass medical and others for $3 to $5 million for that project. That project's going to encompass from there down to Superior Pool. You're talking areas from 240 units to 500 units, possibly. You're talking now a couple hundred units down off Spring. West Bridgewater is bringing 200 units in. I don't know if you're aware, the city of Brockton already has South Health in Brockton. That building is going to be tear down, and Campbell High Ride, A and B is going to be tore down, and there's going to be three new high rises coming in there. There's a lot of things going on. You're talking about the water supply from Silver Lake. I ran Noonan Brothers Oil for many years. I got called by the city of Brockton for a fire. They're in a storm. They could not run Silver Lake with the adequate equipment they had down there. They're trying to run the protection for the city of Brockton and all these towns that had an emergency generator burning 60 gallons an hour, and they only had a 500-gallon tank. Nobody knows what's going on. Everybody's saying, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. The Whitman area down there, that's going to be tied into the sewerage into Brockton. Is the city of Brockton is going to establish the sewerage rates for District 2, or is East Bridgewater going to establish it? Who's going to establish these rates? There's a lot of things here. Also, I talked to a fire chief tonight. Eastern State Steel is a brownfield, our EPA site. So it's been cleaned up. Who has a manifest for everything that was transported out there? Where's the 21E for the groundwater samples taken out of that area? What is the groundwater sample, and what's the depth of the water within that area? How much contamination do taxpayers or people in East Bridgewater have to pay? They had a piece of Brockton, Brockton on Elliott Street. It costs $700,000 to clean that property up. Nothing's there yet. We got no idea what's going to be spent on these projects. We don't have a town planner. The town administrator is trying to do the projects. Who in town is capable of writing the grants for this?
That's exactly as we spoke about the last...at the last meeting when Mr. Seelig was here, the town is looking to obtain grant money to at least start the process of cleaning up that site. And as Mr. Gardner has said, we all understand that there can be nothing built there and nothing, no residences or anything like that occupied there until that process is complete, according to, you know, the way it's supposed to be completed, and, you know, that's all certified.
Have you applied to Stonehill College to see if they've got a grant writer capable?
That's not...that's not in our...that would...we'd have to ask the town administrator on that question. I don't know the answer.
This is all these answers should be answered before it comes to...before you people. You're asking us to put the horse before the wagon. These questions should be answered by somebody who has an authority in town that manages these projects. We're not here micromanaging.
Sir.
Christie Olympia, Melon Street. I'm just wondering how the, you know, it doesn't seem like anybody wants this thing in town, I mean, as far as I've talked to anyway. And I'm just wondering if the Chevron deference being shot down by the Supreme Court, if that's, you know, that won't be able to be forced on us. Would that have anything to do with anything?
I mean, right now, you know, as we indicated, the town, as every city in town is in the state of Massachusetts, everybody's under a mandate to comply with this by the end of this year.
Right.
What the consequences of that will be for noncompliance, we don't know. Whether the law will be upheld by the Supreme Judicial Court, we don't know. So we're moving...
But I mean, it already was shut down, you know, they overturned Chevron.
You're talking the Supreme Court of the United States.
Yes.
We're talking the Supreme Judicial Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Right, but that'll affect everything everywhere. I mean, it's huge.
So whether it does or doesn't, I mean, that's obviously for them to judge. So, you know, the charge that we have is to put the town in a place where there is compliance by the date that is required. We will, you know, do...we'll take our votes and, you know, I don't know what those votes will be at this moment, but we'll take those votes. And it's, as I said, it's up to town meeting to make a determination as to whether they will or won't adopt, you know, what we recommend.
And why is there not a referendum on it so the town can vote upon the 40B or whatnot? Why is this just...
Well, 40B is a state law, so, I mean, you know, it's not...
Oh.
So, I mean, that's not...that's not anything to do with the Town of East Bridgewater. That's any city or town across the Commonwealth. As far as, again, the same thing with the MBTA Communities Act, it's a requirement that's been imposed upon cities and towns by the state, and, you know, we're just...we're trying to make a sensible recommendation with respect to the areas that we feel can be, you know, logically rezoned, but logically fit within that...the requirements of that district so that, you know, the town is compliant when it needs to be. Other questions?
I have a quick question. On that Spring Street project, is that going to be tied into District 1 of the sewer with the Town of East Bridgewater? I really don't...people don't realize, but we've got sewerage going now from CVS down to the Plaza.
I'll answer that.
All right, I've got the answer for you, okay? So the answer to that is yes. The town has a sewer treatment system here on town property. That's currently sized at 30,000 gallons a day with the option of adding a second unit to 60,000 gallons a day. We have a disposal capacity already approved by the state that's up off of Central Street behind the school. That disposal site can handle almost six times that amount. We have the physical property and the space needed to add additional units in addition to the potential two units that are there. So we have more than enough capacity in the downtown with added capacity. The current capacity is 30,000 gallons, we're only using about 10. We can add another 30,000 by just bolting the new equipment to the floor. The building's already there, the piping is already there. Almost all of Carriage Crossing, and I believe in fact now all of Carriage Crossing and CVS, Dewhurst, and Subway are already all connected into the system. All of those users are paying that cost in full, no deduction. All of the developers under the proposed bylaw here would pay in full 100% of the cost for the services they receive. The town would not pay a dime for the water or the sewer. Individual users, probably in a homeowners association, if it's the 40B, would be billed through a homeowners association. There is no out-of-pocket cost for what we're doing that's not going to be paid for by the users, which includes all the industrial users down along Route 18, down to Signature Healthcare, which is where this would end. Technically, it would end at the property line by Superior Pool, but the lines would only serve as buildings that are physically built within what is the Hart Hanks complex. All of the former Foxborough Company property is controlled by a real estate holding company by the name of Hart Hanks, including the Signature Healthcare building itself.
So, sir, basically you speak, the Town of East Bridgewater has been reversed the initial cost for the tie-in from CVS down to the sewer.
Yes.
Which we bought it for $500,000 at the town meeting, I believe.
Yes.
Bought that when that tie-in came, in fact.
CVS paid for that.
For the sewerage being provided by each individual owner.
They're paying us the cost. Yes, that's correct.
Other comments?
Don Shazak, West Union Street. On the project across the street, you know, after the sites came up from the post office, you were talking about single-family homes. Do you mean Spring Street, the single-family homes on small lots?
The way this bylaw works is it's up to the developer to determine what he wants to put where, and it's going to be driven by the market place.
Other meetings you talked about, a business on the bottom and apartments up above.
Possibility.
That's a possible...
Possibility.
This area...
And that area has so much traffic now, it's crazy now, if you try and get out of the street. Traffic's backed up beyond the post office on the stop sign of the street.
So again, the idea is you're putting out an overlay bylaw which says to Mr. Developer, here are some options. You decide what the market will carry and what you think will be a desirable financially and otherwise approach to take to the development of this land. So if it is all, you know, single-family houses on 10,000-square-foot lots, terrific. If it's a mix of that with, you know, larger buildings with commercial on the first floor and residences above, I don't know. I mean, that's up to the developer to figure that out, the allowances that this makes or would make.
But you asked us at the meeting, what would we like to see happen to that land?
Yep.
So it doesn't make any difference what we think, the developer's going to do what they want.
Well, I mean, what you guys have talked about, you know, I know that you've talked about a recreation center and, you know, things of that nature. I mean, we're talking about a significantly sized parcel, which obviously is not going to be devoted entirely to something like that. There's no reason why those kinds of things can't be incorporated into a proposal.
And we mentioned the youth center, and I know the master plan says we need to have a playground for school-age kids.
So, and then the other...
That's not a whole lot of traffic.
The other part of it would be that the intent, at least something that I think is important, would be to make some sort of a natural connector to...between this project and your downtown, if you will, so that you, you know, try to develop a downtown areas to make something that would be, you know, an attractive and vibrant area for business and for homeowners.
It's not attractive now, but it's very busy and the traffic is...
Sure, no, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Could I also add that any development is going to impact the traffic flow, but that's another thing that could be addressed. I mean, we don't have to leave things as they are and not make any improvements in that regard as well. I mean, it all works as a puzzle, you know? You have to address the whole system there.
Jason Maloney, 65 Cook Street. I've lived in this town for almost my whole life, and Cook Street was pretty rough for a long time, and now it's starting to come along as a nice neighborhood, a lot of single-family homes. There's almost no commercial activity in that area now, so how would we even entice somebody to come to that area where they're just going to end up closing shop, like every other business that's down there currently, along with the crazy amount of traffic that's there?
So, I mean, the idea would be that you would have businesses which complement residential life with them. So, you know, just for example, down in Plymouth the other day, they have a new development right along the waterfront, which has residences over a restaurant on the first floor. You know, you could have something of that nature. You could have a community center on the first floor. Whatever the idea would be, that you're trying to entice, you know, those residents and, you know, others to utilize a downtown area which would promote your business growth.
I would argue that Plymouth is a completely different animal than East Bridgewater.
I'm just...yeah, of course. I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying to you that that's, you know, the idea. Just, you know, and, you know, again, it's up to a developer to determine, hey, this is something that makes economic sense, it could be viable, or maybe, hey, I want to develop it all as single-family homes, who knows?
Is there a timeline to clean this up? Do we have a deadline that it has to be cleaned up by?
It could take years.
This is basically a step in the direction of compliance with the law in Massachusetts, and it's also a step toward hopefully starting the process of allowing the town to get... the town to get some grant money to attack the problem of cleanup on that site, which is apparently, you know, been something that's been hanging there for a long time.
If it's deemed a super site, though, then that should get unlimited federal funding, no?
No, it's not. No. Yep, let me hear, anybody else? Anybody else first? Okay, last question here. Yeah, thanks, sir.
In the town plan, was anything looked at to address the center as far as the traffic flow? You brought that, you said we could look into the center. There's five streets coming into that center. You sit at a light, I believe that the state says you can't idle for more than two minutes. So I don't see how you can make that center any better.
Yep.
Now, I worked in Boston for 40 years. I went through the whole big dig. I saw what the big dig did, but it didn't do anything after you get out of the big dig. The expressway was still a mess, and beyond is still a mess because the infrastructure after it stayed the same. I don't see, how are you going to do anything to that center of town?
Take a peek at the section entitled Transportation in the master plan online.
And what did they propose?
Well, I, I would commend you to read it. I mean, it's not, it's not a, it's a number of pages long. It's got some...
As a short answer is yes, I wrote some of the chapters from the plan. I will say public facilities is the best because I wrote that one. But there is a lot of sort of focus on that intersection. So I lived in East Bridgewater when I was a student at Bridgewater State University over on Old Bedford Road, in what was, I think, an attic apartment. But, so I'm very familiar with that intersection. There is some, I'm not a transportation planner by trade nor by education, but there is, there were some recommendations about how to make that intersection more efficient, I suppose, from a travel perspective, so you don't get caught up in sort of the traffic and the, being in the, when I was traveling here, was caught in the middle of the intersection, I was trying to pay the left turn and had it back up to not block the roadways up. Short answer, yes, but don't know what it is, but...
I'll look up.
So not a perfect answer.
Thank you.
If I could just add, there was, there was a proposal to do like a little bypass roadway to take some of the heavy traffic off...
Off the main road.
Off the main road, so that they would go to, is it West Union?
It could not be West Union.
No, no. It was, it was...
Was it Mary?
Is it Spring Street?
Again, I think...
Just to look at it. But there was, there was a proposal to reduce the...
I think the answer, the short answer to the question is yes, there is a section in the master plan which does speak to that, so I commend you to that. So with respect to this issue, what I think we'll do is we're going to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. In the meanwhile, we will put a final version of plans, bylaw, and any other relevant supporting material online so that you can look at it in advance. And I think it would be the intention of the board at the August 19th meeting to, you know, take a vote with respect to the adoption of this bylaw for the overlay district and the related maps. So I'd entertain a motion at this point to continue the discussion on this until, it's just a following item, so it doesn't have to be a specific time on the 19th.
So moved.
Mr. Heager makes the motion, a second. Mr. Gardner?
Second, for discussion.
Sure, go ahead.
So I think potentially we want to schedule this as a public hearing since this is a zoning change which requires a formal recommendation to town meeting.
Do you want to...
So, so I would ask Mr. Heager if it's okay with him if we, if we change the motion to make this a formal public hearing to vote the form and content of MBTA proposal bylaw to the Board of Selectmen for annual, I'm sorry, special town meeting.
If we do that...
With whatever edits and changes we need to make based on that public hearing.
If we do that, are we within time depending on when they want to schedule a special town meeting?
It's good for 90 days. It'll definitely perform 90 days.
All right. All right, so Mr. Heager, you available to that? Yeah. So, okay, so we will, we will then schedule that as a public hearing. We put the other on at 7:15, so let's put that on at 7:30 on the 19th of August, that being the motion. There is a second to that motion, all in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That is voted unanimously by all members present. The matter will be held as a public hearing for final action on the 19th. Thank you, guys. Last item that would be discussed tonight, there is some, you guys may understand that with respect to the 40B proposal, one of the things that needs to happen is that the planning board needs to weigh in with respect to its opinions on potential waivers that are, that are requested, and also, you know, any subdivision issues that are, that are appropriate. Chair is a, is a notice of butter to that property, so I will not participate in this discussion, other than particularly as a, as a member of the public when, when it does come up. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Gardner at this point for general discussion, and I will step out to see what's going on out in the corridor.
Okay, so I think everyone in this board and maybe everyone in this room understands that a 40B is a specific section of state law that's handled exclusively by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is mandated under that state law to, to accept a letter of recommendation from all of the various town boards that they're theoretically acting on behalf of. We are one of those boards. So we're going to have on our agenda on August 19th, probably at 8:00 PM, a discussion to formalize that letter, which will be sent to the Zoning Board of Appeals as part of that process. The intent also is that, that we, we being the planning board, will attend to the next meeting at the Zoning Board of Appeals. It was announced by Chairman Looney, Chairman Looney of the ZBA that all of the town boards and departments that are party to the input that's supposed to go to ZBA will be formally invited to that meeting, which means we will have to notice the fact that we'll be present as a quorum in that meeting.
And that was the 7th, August 6th?
I believe the date they sent was the 7th, but I'm not sure that that's...
Oh, it's not 5...
You can check with the office just to make sure. I believe it is posted on the town website under the ZBA selections.
If it's the 7th, I can be there.
So Mr. Looney also indicated during that public hearing that, that this will probably be a three to four month process. Order of magnitude is bigger than wayside farms, which is also a 40B, but that took, I believe, almost four months from beginning to end on the first hearing. There are a lot of issues that need to be discussed and aligned, multiple ones which impact the planning board directly, because one of the things the planning board is responsible for under subdivision control is rotary layouts, interconnections, reasonably safe access and egress for multiple sites on a large development. So all of those kind of things will fall under our letter of recommendation, depending on, on how the board as a whole feels. Okay, so I'll say for right now, that'll be on the agenda at 8 o'clock. We'll have to check with the office to make sure that 8 o'clock works. I believe we've scheduled items for 7:15 and 7:30. The 7:30 one is obviously the master plan. So that's not going to be a 15-minute public hearing, so I think we'll go to 8 o'clock. I'll make sure that the office notifies everyone as to when that next meeting at ZBA is beneficially scheduled, both time and place. I believe because of the expected size of the citizen participation, it'll probably have to be at the auditorium.
That's where it's happening, Roy. It's happening in the auditorium. It's supposed to be against the auditorium.
It will be the auditorium, right? Yes. It is, it is the 7th.
That's a Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken.
That is a Wednesday night. That's their normal meeting night.
I do have a commitment on Wednesday nights, so I may not be there, depending...
We would need a quorum.
Not necessarily, but we're going to post it just in case a quorum does show up. We are supposed to have posted meeting notice if a quorum of the board is going to be present at some other board's meeting.
Okay. Okay. We'd need one more for a quorum, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure how it's going to work with Kevin. He is technically a member of the board, and I'm sure he'll be there, because he is in the butter on the opposite side of the street in that area. Wayside Farms is on the other side of Route 18.
Oh, okay.
It's the 40B with the, I think it's got 36 duplex units in it.
Yeah, very nice, very nice. Yep, thank you.
And that's all I have.
I'll take...
One or two more questions or comments if anyone has anything else? Otherwise, we're going to adjourn for the night. Okay, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make an entertaining, I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So a motion, Heager, second Tedesco, to adjourn our regularly scheduled planning board meeting. We'll call it 8:24 PM. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So we adjourned.